It's an interesting image here you got.
I gotta sign.
That's an interesting image you had on your screen.
Oh, I'm gonna sign that in.
Oh. Go. Alright.
That's right.
Where is it?
Who could it's tired.
Here's to here.
Oh, that's me. William Square.
So. They shouldn't have all of them.
There's great.
That was county line.
He was right county line.
Hello, everyone.
I mean, it was scary.
I was just sitting there and just.
I know.
You ready?
Okay.
Alright. Yeah, six o'clock. So we will bring this city council regular business meeting Thursday, November seventh to order. And Z, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Baker.
Here.
Brown.
Here.
Cool.
Here.
Livingston.
Here.
Mineki.
Here.
Mayor Phillips.
Is not here.
Okay, if you please join us in the pledge of allegiance.
States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God indivisible liberty and justice for all.
Next is approval of the agenda. Would anyone like to move any of the consent agenda items to the regular agenda?
Motion.
Okay.
Second.
Motion by Cool, second by Brown. All in favor?
Aye.
Close same. Alright. So then welcome of guests and public comment. Uh, this is for non-agenda items. There's a three-minute time limit. Can't take action on any of these items tonight since they aren't on the agenda. If you would like to speak to anything on the consent agenda now would be the time to do so. So is there anyone who would like to make any public comment? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Uh, A is expenditures, B tax abatements, C October seventeen twenty twenty-four minutes of the regular city council meeting, D new Class C retail alcohol license for Cooper Central Table and Cocktails, E approved fiscal fiscal year twenty-six tax increment financing certification, F resolution approving fiscal year twenty-four annual urban renewal area report, G resolution accepting and acknowledging a strategic plan for the police department, H resolution approving starting wage for the newly hired community development office assistant, I resolution approving supplemental agreement number one for engineering services on the Cherry Parkway widening project, J resolution to approve pay estimate number two to GTG construction for the city hall renovation project, K resolution to approve pay estimate number three to the same, L resolution adopting an amendment to sub to a subaward agreement by and between the city of Norwalk, Iowa and Warren County, Iowa, M resolution ordering construction of certain public improvements, North River Interceptor Extension Phase One, Proving preliminary plans and fixing a date for hearing they are on and taking of bids therefore, N resolution approving the sale of materials and equipment through gov deals, O resolution amending the name of the Warrior Run Estate Clubhouse Plat number one to Warrior Run Clubhouse Plat one.
So that's an important.
Yep. E resolution setting date, uh, setting December five twenty twenty-four for a public hearing to establish the Northeast Service Area Benefited Sewer District, Q resolution setting December nineteen twenty twenty-four for a public hearing regarding the annexation of approximately thirty-two hundred acres of property southwest of the city of Norwalk, R resolution approving the updated contracts for the Norwalk Rehabilitation Assistant Program projects for nine-one-eight-nine Old Orchard Drive.
Motion.
Second.
Second by Mr. Baker. Lindsay, we call the roll.
Councilmember Baker.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Cool.
Yes.
Livingston.
Yes.
Mineki.
Yes.
So that passes. Moving on to six, old and new business for consideration, discussion and possible action. A, uh, a resolution approving the supplemental agreement number two for the geotechnical engineering services for Iowa Highway twenty-eight and Iowa Highway five Southmont Exit Ramp Traffic Signal Project. This was originally on the consent agenda. I asked it to be moved for a roll call vote. So does anybody want any discussion on the matter? I get a motion?
Motion. Second.
Motion from Cool, second from Brown. Somebody's got some.
I'm goofing around with it.
Yeah, little feedback going.
George, how old are you?
Alright, Lindsay, we call the roll.
Councilmember Brown.
Yes.
Cool.
Yes.
Livingston.
No.
Mineki.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
Alright, so that passes.
I heard myself over there for a moment too.
Alright, B a resolution approving the site plan of Dimples Family Dentistry. Uh, Luke Paris, I'm gonna let you go with this one.
Yep, so, uh, this is the Dimples Family Dentistry building. It's at the southwest corner of Colonial Parkway and Highway twenty-eight. Um, this had previously been back, uh, for a site plan amendment when they were, uh, looking at doing a, uh, venue space in there. They since kind of changed plans with that and are just doing, um, expansion of their, uh, dental office into the Medica cap space. So this site plan really is just establishing, um, some new pavement and, uh, parking areas, uh, with the driveway for Medica cap being removed, um, some sidewalks there, and then also adding public sidewalk along Colonial Parkway.
Any discussion or comment questions?
So this is gonna be used as a entertainment venue? Did I remember that right or?
They, they're moving away from that and just expanding their dental office.
Alright, okay, because I was wondering about parking stalls.
We were a little concerned about that.
They're getting rid of that, right?
Thank you.
Hundred percent.
Right.
That, that was the easiest drive through I've ever seen in my life.
Well, never mind.
Do you want to make a motion?
Motion, motion.
Alright, motion by Baker.
Second.
Second by Mineki. Any further discussion? Lindsay, we call the roll. Councilmember Cool.
Yeah.
Livingston.
Yes.
Mineki.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Alright, that passes. Uh, C, resolution approving the site plan amendment of Harvey's Automotive. Luke, this is you too.
Yes, it is. Um, so this one is, uh, just a facade amendment, really. Um, Harby's is wanting to do an upgrade to their, uh, building facade, um, changing out some of the storefront with windows and door, and then mainly doing a brick kind of wainscoting and surround around the door as well.
Discussion questions, public comment?
Should look nice.
Yeah, glad about it.
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Baker, second five.
Cool, okay.
Sorry.
Any further discussion? Alright, Lindsay, would you call the roll?
Councilmember Livingston.
Yes.
Mineki.
Yes.
Baker.
Yeah.
Brown.
Yes.
Cool.
Yeah.
Hey, that one passes. Uh, D, a resolution initiating an amendment to the Norwalk zoning ordinance to conduct various text amendments. Luke, how you doing?
Pretty good. Um, so, uh, for this item, we're asking that, uh, council initiate zoning, um, for several different, um, text changes that, uh, we want to address. Um, I'll run through each one of them. There are five that we feel like we need to do based on changes to state code, clarifying things, uh, some, uh, court cases. Um, and then there's three that we have just dealt with some things and we would like to clean up, but, um, I think it's more in your purview to say, should we do that or not? Um, so the first thing we want to do is zoning petitions. Um, during our rezoning with the, uh, uh, Legacy Circle Apartments, we had some questions about petitions. Our language was a little bit different than the state code language. We said we want to come back and clean that up. Um, so we would do that with this, um, to make sure it matches the state code. Uh, the second one is related to political and temporary signs. Um, uh, essentially there was a Supreme Court ruling that found that regulations that require an analysis of the content of the sign could be a violation of the First Amendment, and that was particularly pointed towards political signage. Our code right now specifically has rules about political signs. I don't think we feel like they're egregious or anything, but we just need to change it up so that we're not calling out political signs on their own. And then broadly, that will change how we consider temporary signs. So, um, that's that one. Uh, residential architectural standards, the state approved, uh, House File twenty-three eighty-eight, uh, which restricts our ability to regulate architectural materials on residential buildings. Um, it's applicable to single-family homes, duplexes, townhomes, and then apartments or condos with a maximum of twelve units per building. We don't have a whole lot in our architectural standards that, uh, relate to those types of projects. Um, but we do have some things. We need to clean that up. Um, importantly though, most of the apartment projects we tend to see would be above twelve units per building, so we could still have requirements for that.
Just basically lets in, what was it? The contractors wanted cheap vinyl siding and cities were.
Yes, some cities would, or, you know, like, uh, some cities have specific districts that have, uh, higher quality material requirements or design styles and stuff.
So the, so the state legislature adopted these standards across the state of Iowa.
Yes.
And we really have no option anyway.
Yes.
Central committee stuff.
So we're just, with this one, we're just clarifying our code to make sure we match up with, uh, what the state allows us to do. Uh, the fourth one, uh, consistency of district names, just as we've added new districts and stuff, there are different points in time where the code will call out the C four district. It might be called the historic Town Center District, and I know where we call it the Founder's Commercial District. There's just some minor areas where we want to clean that up, make sure that it's saying the same thing.
What are we moving to? What? What are we gonna call it then?
Um, I don't know that we've determined that. Probably the most recent one that we've used, right? So.
I kind of like Founder's.
Yes, I, in that situation, it would be Founder's District. Um, and then lastly, for things that we think we need to do, um, exempting city-owned walls and fences from our setback and height requirements. This is primarily from our wall project and looking at where we want to do some walls. Doesn't always jive up with what our code says for heights of fences and things. So we just want to give us the ability to do what we want to do when we own it. So. Yeah.
So, so it's the private property.
Yeah.
I, I could see that.
So those are the five that we really feel like we need to take forward and do something with. Um, the other three, uh, the first one is amendment processes for planned unit developments. You probably all aren't aware of this because we've never done it, but the PUD language does give me the authority to approve minor amendments to PUDs when it, when there's changes to density of a residential development. So I think it's fifteen percent. I can allow them to increase and shift things around and stuff. Um, it also allows me to say, no, you have to do that as a rezoning, and that's what I've always done in that scenario because I feel like it's a significant change. You guys should get some say in that. Um, our residents should be able to come in and say something with that. So this change will basically just formalize that. We strike that minor amendment process out and just keep doing what we've always been doing, which is bringing amendments to you guys as rezonings. Um, number seven here is tattoo studios are currently only allowed in Norwalk as a special use. We've had, um, two in the last three, four years that we took through as special uses. Both were approved. Um, we as staff feel that a tattoo studio is different in nature than it likely was in the late nineties when this code was contemplated, and actually our code was probably adopted from a Des Moines code or some other central Iowa code that was created earlier in the nineties, um, when, you know, a tattoo studio was potentially seen as more of a CDs type establishment. Um, so we just felt like that was, uh, something to consider, uh, potentially just allowing in our commercial districts. Um, they, both of the ones that we had go through the boarding adjustment were approved without issue. Um, so that was something we thought to be valuable to discuss. And then lastly, corner lots, um, if you can pull up the site plan, it will be easier to talk about with the, uh, images I prepared for this. Um, but the first thing to understand why I talk about this is, uh, corner lot, well, back up, a front yard is any property that you have that fronts a public street. So if you're on a corner lot, you technically have two front yards. You have the front yard that your driveway faces off to that you probably call your front yard, and then you have the front yard to the side street that you probably consider your side. Okay, our code says that, uh, you cannot have a fence taller than four feet in your front yard. With the exception that corner lots are allowed to extend a fence taller than four feet up to fifteen foot of their side front yard. Okay?
So fifteen foot setback.
Yep, so in the image there, the red area is what is allowed for a fence currently. Um, if you scroll down, that would be like, uh, corner lots that aren't an end lot. Um, they call this a reverse corner lot for some reason. Um, but this is one that's not on an end lot, um, or the end of a block. It's kind of a mid-block thing. Um, what we're wanting to bring up is we get a lot of complaints from residents of corner lots that they feel like they can't use all of their yard. Um, you know, typically we tell folks, that's our rules. I'm sorry, you have to follow those rules, and they do. Um, we also always give them the option to come talk to you all about that, but we felt like we've heard this enough that it's something we should bring up in this process and see if it's anything that you would want to address. If you scroll back up to that first scenario, um, this one to us as staff kind of makes sense. When it's on the end of a block, maybe it's not that big of a deal that it goes into the green area. So the green would be where you would allow a fence if you allowed it to be the whole thing, right? It goes right up to the sidewalk. It's not really blocking anybody. It's not blocking the, um, the sight vision of everything. We not too worried about that. If you go down to the image below, is really why we have this rule in place. You can see as if you allowed fencing the green area, that would block that person's vision and their driveway to the north of the sidewalk down the street and the street itself. So that situation is always what we've relied on to help inform people about why we have this requirement. I think that situation's an important one. Um, if we were to bring forward a zoning change to something, it would likely be classifying lots into different types and not allowing, uh, six-foot fences into that side front yard in this scenario, but allowing it in the scenario in the first picture. Set clear as mud?
Yes.
I agree with that. That's, you said that very well.
Thank you. So with that, um, we're happy to initiate zonings on any of those that you want, or not. I guess talking to Jim, our thought process here would be a motion to do all of them, or a motion to do one, six, four, and two, or what, what have you. Yeah, they would, they'll end up, some of them might be lumped together if they're just small things, but we might end up with a busy zoning amendment.
You can bring them forward. I'd, I'd have to think a little bit on the corner lot thing though, because circumstances could change around the area if you're allowing that to go out there for the fence.
Yeah, I feel that way about the tattoo and, and, and the fence. So, but I don't have a problem with you beginning the work to, to, to draft something as long as we get to consider them separately.
Totally, yep.
Thank you.
Alright, any other discussion, comments, questions? Public? Any want to make a motion?
Motion. Make.
Second.
And make, uh, the motion is to accept these five.
To initiate an amendment.
Related, related to those five, and then to encourage discussion on the next ones or just seven and eight?
Well, I would, I would think the proper motion would be to continue, uh, to initiate one through eight. Because it have to go through P and Z, and that's when the consideration recommendations are. Uh, but I think even uh, like we discussed, by initiating that, I think the council members made it clear that, you know, they certainly aren't committing to it by, uh, initiating it.
Great.
I understand. So.
I understand all the voting.
By Mineki, second by Baker.
Second, I'll second it.
Did you? I thought you did. Well, there you go. Thank you.
I'm here for you.
Lindsay, we call the roll.
We're good.
Councilmember Mineki.
Sometimes I gotta try.
Baker.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Cool.
Yeah.
Livingston.
Yes. Alright, that passes. E, resolution approving an agreement accepting a surety for public infrastructure at the Holland Point Plat four area. Alright. Uh, the resolution for surety is standard practice for instances where final approval of a public infrastructure is still pending while the developer would like to start selling lots. So the sureties are insurance that the work will be completed. Who else wants to say something? Luke, Tony, Wayne?
That's, I mean, I think that's the gist of it. In this scenario, we have, uh, Holland Point Plat four, which, um, had some infrastructure that's very nearly complete, but not quite on the timeline of when they wanted to, uh, work to get the final plat through. Um, really, the, the infrastructure that's just getting built for this is the area identified as Street Lot B, west of Bryson Drive. Um, so they are wanting to go ahead and proceed with that final plat because it does realign some of those lot lines along Garland and some other things. Um, I, we, we haven't gotten a walkthrough scheduled yet. I'm looking to Tony, but, um, I think they are substantially complete with the work and we're close to doing that.
Yeah, just to clarify, uh, um, what this performance bond amount is. So the amount in is, is about three hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollars. So that's the total amount for, uh, for all of the public improvements associated with this plat. So, and that's based on, I mean, talking to Hubbell, that's based on the contracts that they have for doing the work. So those are real numbers. I've reviewed the numbers and, and they're good numbers now. As, as Luke mentioned, there's about ninety percent of this work is done. We haven't walked through and accepted any of the public infrastructure. So started out with like about a forty or fifty, fifty thousand dollar bond, and we requested a performance bond, bond for all of the public improvements because we haven't accepted any yet. So, so we've reviewed the bond. It's, everything is in order. Just wanted to point out that this is for all of the public improvements, even though ninety percent of it's already complete.
And so when do they have to perform? When in, when in relation to, right? They want to start selling. I understand that, but when do they have to perform?
We have January one, twenty twenty-five.
Okay.
And we're anticipating a, a final walkthrough on the project within the next week or so, week or two, couple of weeks. Um, and then we'll, we'll, uh, provide a, you know, recommendation letter to the city to accept the public improvements. Those will be accepted separately by the council from, from the final plat, which is the next item on the agenda.
Is Garland Avenue open in Bryson? Or is it still closed right now?
They are not. Those are the ones that Tony mentioned have not been accepted. I don't know.
Yeah, so part of Garland was removed. There was a part of that one that was removed, uh, that has cure time now. I'm not, I'm, I'm guessing that, that small part's been open, but, but none of those lots are developed in the area where the, where the improvements were on Garland or further west.
Until they, uh, get the bike way across there. That's the only way we can get over there without driving on Beardsley.
And, and those improvements haven't been done yet. Yeah, so.
But they're, they'll have those improvements done by January one.
Correct. Well, then we hope so. We, we believe so. They need to.
Who is that?
Drop on the shirt. Yeah, that's what they're telling us.
Right, yeah, I, I just, I just don't understand. Yeah, okay. I mean, I don't understand why, right? We're two months away. How many do they think they're gonna sell in two months that they can't wait two months? I don't understand, but, okay.
They could sell a few, but, okay, so if we give them permission to do this, if we accept a surety and give them permission, we're gonna approve the plot right this evening anyway, right? So we won't have any problems with the county at their level or anything like that, right?
Correct. If you approve the surety, you, it's, they're different items, but they're the same, right? You can't do the plat without the surety. If you do the surety and then not the plat, that really wouldn't make any sense.
This, this procedure is called out in Iowa code and the, and the city code as far as an acceptable alternative.
Yeah.
Uh, and it's, it's fairly routine, routinely done that, but, uh, you know, in the past, we have had some deadline issues and parks and things like that. Uh, but.
I know we've done it. I, I know we've done it plenty with parks. I don't know that I recall doing it often with infrastructure. I'm not saying that we can't. I just, it just seems like a.
Have you ever had to use the surety? Uh, with some parks, we've used it, but it wasn't really a forced, we're grabbing it from you. It was more a talk to the developer and the developer said, yeah, why don't you just go ahead and use it and get it done with?
And it was like seeding and trees.
Yeah, 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 yeah. Because we're gonna have, we'll have another one similar to this later on the agenda regarding a park where it's too late in the year to, to plant seeds and developers been cooperative and everything like that. It's just we're outside the seeding window. So you'll see another one similar to this, uh, later in the agenda also.
I think this would be fine. My only question was, you know, are we gonna have all the boxes checked that we leave here this evening? It sounds like we will, so we wouldn't have any issues later. Like, I would make the motion to accept that.
Second.
Any further discussion? Lindsay, we call the roll.
Councilmember Baker.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Cool.
Yes.
Livingston.
Yes.
Mineki.
Yes.
Okay, that passes. F, resolution approving the final plat of Holland Point Four. Right, so as we just said, this, uh, the fi, the previous item lets us proceed with this item. Luke, do you have anything else to add or?
Just, uh, quick on the details of that final plat. Um, it does create forty duplex lots, uh, seven single-family lots, uh, lot for the, uh, Holland Point Clubhouse, which will be connect, um, Bryson and Garland. It's that one that's identified as lot two as a larger lot.
I thought that's where it was.
Um, and then the formal lot for the larger Callaway Development, which is lot forty-nine, um, that bigger lot at the south of it off of Sayer Drive. Um, that's for the Callaway Project, which had the two apartments ringed by the townhomes.
And these streets, Sayer, Waller, Garland, Bryson, they're all public streets?
Yes.
Each one of them older, well, is this the one? I don't hear.
I think that's on the left. Okay, that's Fitz Five. Okay, I'm, okay. Outlet Z.
Yeah.
Alright.
Any other comments, questions, any public comment?
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Cool, second by Brown. Lindsay, you call the roll.
Councilmember Brown.
Yes.
Cool.
Yes.
Livingston.
Yes.
Mineki.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
Alright, uh, item six, resolution approving, I'm sorry, G, resolution approving a Valley View Parkland seeding agreement. Uh, Paris, it is your show tonight.
Yes, it is. Thank you. Um, so Jim sold thunder a little bit on this one. Uh, we do have the Valley View, uh, final plat on as the next item. Um, part of our acceptance of final plats is any parkland, uh, be dedicated to the city and fully graded and seeded. Uh, of course, we're in November. Um, so that wasn't able to be achieved prior to them wishing to approve the final plat. Um, so this is an agreement to finalize up that seeding. Um, we'll accept a surety of fifteen thousand five hundred, uh, which is based off of the, um, quote that parks received for that work. Um, that's included as an attachment to the agreement as well.
Any other discussion, questions, comments, public discussion?
Second.
Motion by Brown, second by Baker. Lindsay, we call the roll.
Councilmember Cool.
Yes.
Livingston.
Yes.
Mineki.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Alright, that passes resolution, uh, item H, resolution accepting the infrastructure and approving the final plat of Valley View Plat Two. So as we've said, this is having accepted the surety, we can now move on to, uh, discussing and accepting the final plat. Anybody else have anything more?
Uh, just for thirty-one single-family lots and the parkland lot. Um, it's the second phase of Valley View. Um, there will be a third future phase. It's kind of in the center of the development. Um, this is a nice piece to get done as it creates the loop road of walnut, so provides some better circulation for the folks that already live out there.
I don't remember. Is that green space there in that long lot or what's?
Yes, it's in, uh, Lot B on the very last page of that. That is the, uh, parkland. Um, I guess details of that, the north end of the lot has a kind of flat graded out spot behind the homes. Um, that's more of a pad site for some more active use things. And then the south part of the lot, um, is more natural and nature. Um, Um, and some, uh, potential opportunities to, there's a outlot there at the back of it. That's a, a part of the detention basin for the development, um, but we had them leave the edge of it, uh, raised up, um, with the berm though. Uh, the hope is that sometime a trail can kind of connect through that, uh, detention basin outlot through our park to the north and provide a pedestrian, uh, space.
And Walnut Drive is public?
Correct.
And is there a reason it goes from Walnut Drive to Walnut Place?
Uh, is the naming convention that our policy manual that we use for street naming says we should do in loop road scenarios?
Look at changing that.
It'll be nice having another way in, in and out upon that end.
I would add that, uh, with the exception of the provision to the parkland seating agreement, all the public infrastructure on this is completed. We've done our final walkthrough, developed a plan list, all those items made completed, and we provided a letter that can we develop my public works. Acceptance of public infrastructure and approval of final plat.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Motion by Cool, second by Minneke. Any further discussion? Any public discussion? Okay, Lindsay, we call the roll.
Councilmember Livingston.
Yes.
Minneke.
Yes.
Baker.
Yeah.
Brown.
Yes.
Cool.
Yes.
Alright, item I, second reading of an ordinance amending the official zoning map of the city of Norwalk, Iowa by rezoning nine oh eight six South Arilla Road from A R Agriculture Reserve to R one sixty, single family residential. This is the second reading. The property defaulted to AR zoning when it was annexed into the city in two thousand and seven. Property owner wants to build a new accessory structure on the lot and the R one zoning designation would accommodate the proposed structure. Uh, Paris, anything else?
That is all of the details.
Motion.
Second.
By Baker, second by Brown. Any other comments, questions, any public discussion? Um, Lindsay, we call the roll.
Councilmember Minneke.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Cool.
Yes.
Livingston.
Yes. Hey, that passes. Uh, item J, second reading of an ordinance amending chapter fifty-three, open burning regulations with the, the city limits of the city of Norwalk, Iowa by amending sections fifty-three point oh two and fifty-three point oh four. So this would allow the fire chiefs some flexibility with special permitting to allow open burning in certain circumstances. The proposed ordinance details various rules and includes a limit on opening, open burning to properties containing five or more contiguous owned acres of ground and shall be for the burning of grass or other organic plant material grown on and or collected from the parcel upon which the fire is located. Um, Chief, Jim, anything else?
Nothing to ha- add. Happy to answer any questions?
Nothing else.
Any questions, comments, any public?
You got any more feedbacks from Public C or Echo or anything?
No, they're, I mean, they're happy to, for the opportunity, for sure, but no negative feedback from it.
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Baker, second by Brown. Any further discussion? Lindsay, we call the roll.
Councilmember Baker.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Cool.
Yes.
Livingston.
Yes.
Minneke.
Yes.
Alright, that passes. Item K, final reading of an ordinance amending the official zoning ordinance of the city of Norwalk by creating the M two Technology Industrial District. This is the final reading, which would establish this new district. Um, this is the one that has to do with the flowing water towers. Anything else, Luke? Paris?
Nothing new to add.
Another discussion? So based on some comments that, um, I got after my questions and votes before, not opposed to this, to what this is gonna do. I just have some concerns about how it all plays out. Um, and I've asked Jim Jordy to make sure that when the time comes for us to, to have any agreements or PUDs or whatever regarding this property, that there'd be some consideration to given to how the water towers may be secured or disposed of or the water drained and but whose responsibility that is in the event that the property is sold. That alleviates some of my concerns.
Debbie, thanks for thinking about that stuff.
And do you want to make a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Motion by second, uh, by Cool, second by Baker. Any further discussion? Lindsay, you call the roll.
Councilmember Brown.
Yes.
Cool.
Yes.
Livingston.
Yes.
Minneke.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
Alright, that passes. Uh, item L, first reading of an ordinance providing for the division of taxes levied on taxable property in the Norwalk urban renewal area pursuant to section four oh three point one nine of the Code of Iowa. This is the Dunn Industrial Area. So this would create a TIP district for the Dunn Industrial Condominiums Project, south of Delaware Street at ten fifty Madison Street. And allows the city to capture the taxes from non-protected levies to provide economic development incentives. So, I don't, is Jean on? I'm not sure. Hallie?
I am. I'm on.
Hi, Jean.
Hello. Good evening. Um, you pretty much summed it up. This is just the second part of the process uh, of adding or establishing a TIP district. We added the property to the city's urban renewal area in May of this year. And that establishes, um, well, actually it just adds it to the area so that we can establish the TIP district with the ordinance. So tonight is the actual ordinance to, to establish that district and capture the taxes to provide incentives to the developer. Dunn Industrial Condos, uh, has agreed to a five million minimum assessment, which is effective January one, twenty twenty-six. And the city has agreed to rebates of three hundred and ninety thousand over a five-year period. That's all I have to add.
Questions, comments, concerns? Any public comment?
Motion.
By Cool, second by Minneke. Lindsay, we call the roll.
Councilmember Cool.
Yes.
Livingston.
Yes.
Minneke.
Yes.
Baker.
Yeah.
Brown.
Yes.
Alright, that passes. So now M. So this is a discussion of a joint Public Works and Parks Storage Building. Um, Wayne, I understand you and Jean have been setting aside funds to prepare for a new storage building for several years. And so, uh, appreciate that forward thinking. With high interest rates, this obviously saves the city money. Also glad that you and Park, you and Park and Rec are willing to try and work something out together to achieve uh, the best economy scale by adding space for the item. This would free up some space for the PD at the Cherry Street Building, which Park and Rec is now using a part of. Uh, helps maintain some of the equipment that both Park and Rec and, um, Public Work has. So Wayne, I'll let you take it from there.
Thank you, Jackie. Hopefully everybody had a chance to review the agenda statement in the packet. As Jackie mentioned, Public Works has been diligently trying to save money the last three or four years to help fund this project. Um, throughout the CIP process, we keep delaying it for bigger projects. Uh, we're now at a point where we do have funding available. As I prepared to bring it forward, the idea of doing a joint project with Parks came forward because they are they're, they're, they're out of space. They've been out of space from, for years. Um, so we worked with Jean Kelly to try identify funding for the Parks portion of the project. She has an option of using bond proceeds. Um, she can, I'm probably butchering the language, but it's the premium from the last bond. There was money available. Some of it went toward the city hall remodel. There's some remaining. She said that would be an option to fund it. Uh, reviewing that with Luke, he brought up concern that we're doing this outside the CIP process. And this brings forward an issue Public Works has every year is the fiscal year is in the middle of construction season. We like to design and bid projects in the winter and get them going in March or April. If we wait for the CIP process, we're just behind the ball. We're probably not starting construction until July and then we're behind schedule. Um, so that's why we have it on the agenda now. We're bringing it forward outside the CIP process. The money Jean offered up as an option is money that if we're doing it now, is not giving other departments an opportunity to advocate for that money. Cause we're not going, we're not comparing all the projects by now. We're just trying, we're talking about allocating it to, um, the storage shed. And so that's why it's on the agenda, prepared to bring forward a engineering agreement to start designing work, but they, they need to know how big a building to work on to design for. We want to do a joint parts and public works one. We want to just wait on all of it. Want to do just public words. So we're hoping to have some discussion and, okay, narrow down where to go.
So this project, uh, impact on three different departments, right? I mean, technically it would benefit three departments.
It'll, it'll be a great project for Public Works and Park and Rec. Removing the water salesman and parts and Gary has a shop at the Cherry Street Garage that will free up. I'm not sure how much space, how much value that'll be. Getting rid of the water salesman will be a, um.
Be fabulous.
I know it used to be pretty snug in there back when I was.
It's snuggier.
I'll bet it is.
He's been, he's been saving it for about three years or so.
We've had the project in the CIP for eight years before I started, but the last two or four years, but then we still do all of our projects that goes to the CIP, but on my line, budget line items, we've been trying to save money throughout the budget that, that goes in the reserves every year then. So we've been trying to save money on that.
It's been through CIP.
This project has been, it gets evaluated every year. We just haven't funded it yet.
You're gonna get pushed back because something else could.
I would say it's been through CIP. Am I saying that right?
It's been reviewed.
Through the process.
Right. And it's worthy of being, yeah, we keep.
You just don't have enough claws. It's just sort of world down.
The, uh, I think this is super important because the equipment is getting so expensive. And having stuff stored outdoors, the sunshine is as hard on it as any bad weather. I think this is a, for the cost of the equipment that we're buying of parks in here, I don't think anyone can really argue that it's not a wise use of it.
Well, and it's, it's also benefiting a large portion of the
Yeah.
city operation.
I would assume eventually you'll grow into it.
I would.
Assuming it gets filled, yes.
That we're only gonna get bigger. So, I mean, I think this bigger building is what we can afford is.
Cause the school's vacated, right?
So in twenty thirty, the school agreement expires. They currently use one, two, three stalls out of our current building. I think they're allocated one. They've kind of creeped over into two, sometimes three, but they don't use a ton of space in our shop. They use more often space. They're not a huge consumer of our building. Um, but they are, they will be gone in a few years, maybe.
And the, this, your, the design of this building will contemplate having that, a little additional space, right?
Correct, yeah, yep. On a side note, we should have you guys, Jay, Councilmembers Jason and, um, George Alston time to give you a tour, so enjoy.
I know when the building was drawn up, the intention was to add cold storage buildings out in that area for the other departments. I think the library was even one of the things that was contemplated as having storage facilities. So I, I don't see any problem with it. I think it's a good idea. I think we should do it. So if it's time, I guess I would make a motion.
Second.
Okay, we've motioned by Cool, second by Baker. Any additional discussion? Alright, Lindsay, we call the roll.
Can I just have clarification on what we're?
That's just what I was gonna add.
Which alternative we're voting on?
Most likely number one, if you're saying both the Public Works and the Parks and Recreation.
Yes, sir. That would be, yep, sorry.
Wayne, am I saying that accurate?
Correct.
Alright, we're all good. So the motion is to bring forward an engineering contract for a joint Public Works and Park Storage Building, which means we support the additional three hundred and fifty thousand dollars of the bond proceeds to be dedicated to the project. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Yep.
Uh, Councilmember Minneke.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Cool.
Yes.
Livingston.
Yes.
We got a bigger closet now.
Thank you.
Alright, item seven, a future agenda items. The purpose of this is for council to give direction to staff by way of motion to have items placed on future agendas. Not for discussion of the merits of the subject matter, anything anybody wants to put out there for future agenda.
Yes.
What were we talking about in economic development? We should talk about in the future.
Big agenda. DOT, Bryce Grant.
Right of way.
DOT right away.
Right of way.
Probably.
Up north.
Anyway.
Yes, that is what it was. A right-of-way purchase, if you decided to do that somewhere.
Yeah. Is it appropriate now or in future to talk about?
Well, one of the things I wanted to know from Jim is, um, if there is a very specific property we're thinking about, would that qualify as a closed session?
I think we will look at that. I also kind of would like to look at, doesn't mean we can't put it as an agenda, but I also want to research and find out whether uh, municipality can initiate on its own a vacation or right-of-way, uh, even if a neighboring property owner doesn't initiate. Uh, but we could certainly either put it on the agenda now as a future agenda item and decide whether it goes in a closed session or not, or else we could, uh, bring it back at the next meeting.
Say hypothetically, somebody's relatively novice on this council and may not understand entirely what you said a few sentences ago. Could you explain that?
Okay, yes. Under Iowa code, when the state acquires right-of-way for a road or any other purpose, uh, they own it outright. After they're done with the project, if they deem it, uh, not to be of need anymore, so they do not want it anymore or don't have any useful purpose for it, the DNR can vacate that. And under Iowa code, the first priority to obtain that vacated right-of-way would be with the abutting property owner. Because it's presumed that that abutting property owner is where that ground was initially acquired. Okay, so they initiate this process, say, okay, abutting property owner, do you want to buy it for this price? And they set the price. If the abutting property owner chooses not to purchase that, well, then the next next parties that are available to do that are public entities. So they could go to a city, they could go to a school, they go to the county or put it out to everybody and say, okay, the state does not want to own this anymore. The abutting property owner has declined to own it. Do you want to? And buy it from, I mean, you'd be purchasing it. They're not giving it to us.
Yep.
And then if the, uh, if the public entity doesn't, then, you know, there's another priority list. I mean, regular individuals can buy it then at that point in time. So, so that's what we're talking about.
It was almost worth the price of admission right there, Jim.
You have to pay tuition for this.
No, I did at one point.
But was the discussion about just having some kind of policy or some specific area? I mean, I just, I'm not, I'm, I'm not opposed to it being an agenda item, but I just don't know if it.
It was site-specific and we need more information.
Yeah, so maybe we should wait.
Yes, that's what I'm hearing.
Probably have a closed.
Do more investigation.
Yeah.
And we'll bring it up at another day.
Yeah. And we could do that as a staff update.
Yeah.
Yeah, to let you know what we want.
Okay. We'll, we'll put that on, we'll do this, I'll get all those things kind of figured out and, uh, you'll get a report back somehow.
Perfect, thank you.
Nothing else? Alright, so council inquiries and staff updates. Luke Nelson, you get to go first.
I only have one thing, and that's just reminding you of the goal setting next week on the thirteenth. That starts at eight thirty.
So prepared with your goals.
Pretty late at night, it'd be.
AM, say thirty AM.
Alright, Caitlin? No, that's you.
I do, and I have a lot, so I'll try to hurry.
Okay.
Um, the Christmas lights on City Hall will be reinstalled, uh, early December. We don't have an exact date yet. Um, we had a consultation session yesterday regarding our annexation. We did have people show up, Mark Snell from the county and three Jefferson Township representatives were there. So notices will start going out to all the entities and property owners for the December nineteenth public hearing. You may have seen on the Facebook that, um, ci- the, the city has gotten a new credit card system for customer payments, and it hasn't gone extremely smooth, but we are working through it. And I just wanted to let everybody know that we have not charged late fees in October to anyone. And we have not charged late in November to anyone, knowing that the process isn't always easy. It can make someone change something. Um, lastly, kind of, um, going with the city hall remodel, as you can see, we've moved to the other side. Um, I'm, would like to look at getting a ground mounted sign in front of. Um, I'm, would like to look at getting a ground-mounted sign in front of in front of City Hall, like so outside of Luke Paris's office. We used to have letters on the outside of the building. Those have come down and will not go back up. I'd like to look into that unless you tell me otherwise.
Yes.
Do it. Sounds like a good idea.
Thank you, that's all.
Uh, Robin, do you have anything?
She's actually, I apologize, she wasn't able to make it.
Okay, Jean Strabel?
I don't have anything, thank you.
Thank you.
Holly?
Um, for Robin, with the, um, Fieldhouse grand opening coming up on the twenty-second, we do apologize. I know we had a hold on the calendar for tomorrow when we initially thought that it would be tomorrow. And we had to do a lot of, uh, digging to find out how that calendar invite was still out there, because generally we'll retract it. It'll come off of everybody's calendars when the date changes. And I did track it down to the culprit being Luke Nelson. So I'm super happy to know that.
It's so weird that I made a mistake.
So I think it's an offense. He doesn't make many, many mistakes, so it was kind of fun to, uh, find that one out. But, um, anyway, if you still have on your calendar, let us know and we'll try to get it off there, but it is for the twenty-second, twenty-second at four. Um, and you should be getting some more information from Parks and us about.
Twenty-second?
Twenty-second. Okay, thank you.
Yes. Um, and a few of you may be speaking that night, so we'll make sure we get the agenda to you and let you know how that's gonna turn out. It'll be a nice bit. Um, so the recent press release that just went out about HD Sports that are, um, will be opening up in the Dunn Industrial Collection Building two fifty Delaware, it's pretty exciting, um, taking five thousand square feet. And today Jackie was on Channel Five talking about just um developments in Norwalk, and it's kind of what this means for us, because Norwalk's sort of becoming this big sports place for people to have these higher-end opportunities. So it's pretty cool. Uh, we met with a new consul general at the consulate downtown Des Moines a couple of weeks ago, and we will have a City of Norwalk and City of Brew Street meeting coming up soon via Zoom, um, with the elected officials. So be looking for that invite. Um, working with the former agent general of Iowa National Guard on a possible defense project that would be pretty large for us in our southwest development corridor, so fingers crossed for that. The Project West, um, development is now in the development agreement phase, which is pretty exciting, because we've got to that point now where we've worked through all of these other big pieces, that we can actually start the first draft of that development agreement and the negotiations. So you'll be seeing some form of a draft coming forward, at least to view, edit, comment on in the next, um, several weeks. And then we'll probably start the actual public hearing, urban renewal area annexation process for then, um, first quarter of the coming year here in twenty-five, so. Uh, project changes, um, you know, with this southwest development corridor and the Project West being such a big um development in that area, it's changing some of our other projects that we had in place. So we'll be coming back to you about potential change in our rise, our DOT rise grant application for the extension of Delaware. Now that we're not just going to be extending it seven hundred twenty-three feet, it could be miles in the near future, so some shifting there. But you guys will probably have to make a formal decision on that application. Um, and other than that, kind of exciting, because in the next two or three months, we're gonna have Coopers, Mullets, Sunset Lounge and HD Sports to go and check out as brandy businesses, so. Any comments?
Very good, thank you. Alright, Chief Staples?
Well, it's hard to follow, but we'll say that we did a streetlight audit. We found thirty-two streetlights not functioning. We told them in American fix it. And, uh, Officer Wallace is entering his life space field training. He should be done at the, like, the twentieth of this month. And last Friday, Sergeant Downing hit thirty years as a officer of the city of Norwalk. And he celebrated with a pot of coffee and a cake.
Uh, Jean Kelly, sorry, I missed you.
No problem, thank you. Just a couple items. Um, audit presentation will be at the next meeting. Going through the CIP process right now with the department heads. Um, and just kind of wanted to mention something about the Parks and Public Works project tonight that you approved. Both of those items were in the CIP, um, a total of one point four million. Um, and although maybe not the exact same scope in mind, um, and talking with both departments, um, Dakota had mentioned, he thinks that this facility will fulfill their needs for the next ten to fifteen years. Anytime two departments can work together and realize a three hundred thousand dollar savings, makes me super happy. Um, and we'll have to bring a resolution forward stating that we will use those, um, premium bomb proceeds for this project. So we'll be bringing that forward next meeting. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Excellent.
Alright, uh, Chief Porter?
Thank you. Um, on the twenty-fifth of October, a couple of Fridays ago, myself and three other officers participated in the, um, active threat incident management, um, exercise that was held at Prairie Meadows that was sponsored by Pope County Mercy Management. Um, there was agencies represented from all over the metro. There's twenty-seven agencies, um, total where we worked on things like instant command and unified command. So it was a really great opportunity for us to go there and, and see how those systems work together. And then on November second, um, we hosted a Fire Officer One class. It was through the Fire Service Training Bureau. It's a hybrid class that we'll set to complete the end of this month. Um, the class was full, but we had eight participants from our organization and then as well. So, um, we're, we're, we're training and we're trying to raise our levels of service that we're providing to the community. That's all.
Wayne?
Couple items tonight. Uh, fourteen hundred letters went out this week to residents in Norwalk who we don't know the material of their water service line. There's a new state requirement. We have to identify service line material for every water line in town uh, older than nineteen eighty-nine, I believe. Um, the letter, the DNR required certain language in the letter, and the language is somewhat alarming, but it was mandated that we include that language about lead and possible contamination. So those were being received today and we're already getting a bunch of calls. For your information, we don't, we don't know of any lead water line in town. Um, but we do need to inspect every home and visually verify, um, that it's not. Hope anybody to get concerns from residents, we don't think we have an issue, but we are required to go through the process. We've had five water main breaks in the last thirty-one days. That's very unusual. We might get five to seven per year. I don't know why we've had five in the last month. Um, so it's something we're keeping an eye on. It's concerning. Uh, tomorrow is Gary Lamer's twenty-five-year anniversary, so I kind of thought that might be the long, but um, he is a critical employee and, um, he does a lot for the, for the city, so if you see him, congratulations. That's it.
Great, thanks. Tony?
Nothing else for me, thanks.
Yeah, a few items. Uh, on Monday, our new admin assistant started. Her name is Rachel Olson. Uh, she sits at the kind of first desk there in the new admin area. She's the front face of City Hall going forward, and she's been great coming into a pretty chaotic time of everything, but, uh, she's taken it all in stride and, uh, we're happy to have her along. Um, fourteen twenty-one Sunset is the southwest corner of Highway twenty-eight in High Road. It's the old brick house that kind of sits there um, north of where the Sunset Lounge will be and all of that. Um, recently was acquired by a, a group that is gonna look at demoing that house and doing some kind of commercial development. So that's exciting. We have a meeting scheduled next week with them to discuss really what that entails. Um, so we'll have more info on that coming forward. Uh, residents, we had thirty-three new permits, uh, in October, so that puts us to two hundred and twelve for the year, which we're now above what our kind of average five-year, uh, permit value is, so, uh, that's good. Uh, stringing it, tending to be a little stronger than normal. Uh, we also have four commercial permits we issued this month, uh, the Nutrisport at the north end of Chatham and East State Team Street. Uh, Remax in the Sports Flex Building, Ember Market in the Sports Flex Building, and Vivid Life Spot also in the Sports Flex Building. So lots of users coming to our, uh, Greg Young campus area, so that's fun. Um, and then lastly, I wanted to just read you a note I got from one of our alumni rehab applicants. Um, she says, I want to thank you for helping me make my house look so much better. I could not have afforded to do it on my own. I'm thankful the neighbors won't have to continue watching my siding and door continue to deteriorate. She says, I have been a Norwalk resident since I was a child, and your registration program, program is a blessing to me, and I sincerely thank you and Norwalk for your help. So, I thought that was nice. We got that. We don't always get good, nice compliments and, and city officials, so I want to share that with y'all.
Nice to hear that, and that we're a blessing.
Have you seen, uh, with the building applications and stuff, uh, a rush to get in since we're going to be ceasing the tax abatement? Or have you seen a movement?
Not yet, but we've had some questions and discussions about that. Um, we're actually in the process of talking about some tweaks we might do to our permit, uh, expiration and refund policy related to some things that were a little alarming to us as staff for the amount that we might have to review and then potentially have requested for refund. So, if there's any builders that listen to our council member meetings, please don't inundate us with permits. Thank you.
Because I'm not in support of, right? If we do the work, they're not getting a refund. That's my position. Ed?
Uh, no ma'am, I have nothing to know.
Okay. George?
Uh, went on a tour, uh, for the Grimes facility in Polk City yesterday, actually, for the waterworks. So it was kind of interesting. The Polk City was a very old one, and Grimes is the latest and greatest, pretty much, and that's can't imagine what they spent. Facility then. Just learning experience. I appreciate my water even more.
Brian?
Take anything.
Jim?
Um, Luke and I went to the Warren County Board of Supervisors meeting this morning. They had two items on there that involved, uh, the city of Norwalk, one was an agreement that we have regarding some of the county ground that we're annexing into the city. It's Blue Flag Marsh down there, which is a public hunting, public wildlife area. And when it, when we determined that there was gonna be public hunting within the city of Norwalk, uh, our police chief voiced concern about it, and then also Warren County Conservation did, so uh, we got together with Warren County Conservation. We went and wrote an agreement, just basically recognizing we're not gonna get involved with managing it. It's gonna continue to be public hunting and that they're gonna have full control of the area within the Blue Flag Marsh, so. Uh, and I think that that went well, served two purposes. One did to lock in the public hunting and everything like that to satisfy them, but it also, uh, I think it's got good all over it. I mean, there's a big opportunity for that whole green belt area down there along the river as we, as we annex west and we get more ground and there could be trails and everything. And Warren County Conservation, they go on ground on the other side of the river, and I mean, they're just, they, there's a potential to have a great partnership there. With grant getting, management, just everything. So I think, uh, it's really important that we continue to, whether we have to or not, do outreach things to keep them involved and keep a good relationship. Uh, the second thing is also a great relationship thing is we, we discussed the ARPA funds. Uh, if you remember, the county used some of the county ARPA funds and awarded it to the city. Um, uh, one point four million dollars to contribute towards our, our sewer along the, uh, North River down there. And with those ARPA funds, there are some time limitations to get things done. And we're, you're gonna see in the next month, letting a project using that ARPA fund, start sewer project down there. So Tony's been working hard putting that together and uh, so you'll see all that stuff coming in, but we wanted to, we had a small amendment for those, our, for those ARPA funds uh, in that the original agreement said that the sewer is gonna be used for a certified site. That really wasn't a critical part of the agreement, but since federal could audit it in the future, we managed to get rid of certified site, just put in industrial uh, business, uh, development, because we, we're not doing certified site right now, because we've had such great walk without needing that. So we're admitting it just to show that. And once again, it's just, uh, it, you know, being involved with that. Once again, county partnership is great. We got some new supervisors coming in, and I just, uh, I think it's real critical that we, you know, develop relationships with them too. Because it just makes things go so much easier. And working next to Lindsay, she's constantly working in County. Everything we do is, uh, involves them. So I just think it's, it's really good. And right now, walking in, there's kind of nice, you just tell there's a great relationship. They like Norwalk. Uh, we work well with them and everybody, you know, when you have a cooperative, um, work relationship like that, it makes things there so much easier. Meeting went well.
Okay, and I don't have anything, so. I don't need an adjournment.
Not your motion. Staff, though, would agree that it's locked. Due to the great work.
Yeah.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Action by Cool, second by Baker, all those in favor, I?
I started closing.